Call to order and recording of members present and absent.
Hanson.
Fred.
Kane.
Here.
Ms. Durmit.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Parker is absent.
Special meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that the notice of the time, date, and place of this meeting was given at least 48 hours prior to this meeting to the county clerk of Woods County, was mailed and delivered to all of those who have made written requests and paid for the request fee with special notice of meetings. I also certify that at least 48 hours prior to the special meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view at the location of the meeting.
I do prefer business. I think I want to start by saying, Mr. Argos, I want to thank you, public, for your leadership and all the hard work of you and all of you in the room that has went into these policies during this unprecedented time. We're blessed to have the crew we have, and I don't want you to go, I don't want you to go unnoticed without saying thank you for all that you've done since we were hit with this pandemic. So, on behalf of our board, I want to say thank you again for everything. We will get through this, and we will be stronger and better people for it. So, that being said, the items of business, point one, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Alva Public Schools reopening plan for the school year of 2021.
Before I start, each of you have the return to learn plan at your table. I want to thank all of our principals, Ms. Lovelace, Mr. Lording. From March to now, they have done tremendous work. And I think I really appreciate that group. We've added two, two new ones to our group, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Webster, and they've been phenomenal. And their input is greatly appreciated. You know, we never wanted to rush to judgment and rush a plan out there to our community. We always wanted to be mindful of, higher thing is changing, and it may continue to change. But I know from an administrative standpoint and from a, from a planning standpoint, I know we're very confident in what we've, we've been able to present to you today. And so, I want to walk through this with you and, and provide and fit some of the highlights of that plan. And then when I'm finished, if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer those. So, if you'll turn to the Leadership Advisory page, that is the third page. You know, I talked about not rushing to plan out, and part of that has been the communication that we've had as a team, as a leadership team, the communication that I've had with you all as a board. Our community partners with Northwestern, with the Career Tech, with our medical professionals, Jeremy Logstons, Liz Kinsey, Ashley Ferguson, and State, and local county health officials have all had input and helped guide and direct us as we put this together to meet who we are as a school. And so, I'm very appreciative of them. If you look at the bottom of the, of the advisory team page, you can see the names of some of our staff, teachers and non-certified. And I want to thank all them, but really all of our staff. We've been able to have kind of a virtual town hall. These folks that you see there have been able to work directly with their building and site administrator to plan for getting our students and teachers and support staff back in school. And that's what we planned, and that's how we planned. How do we get kids back in school safely? How do we get our teachers back in school safely? And we believe that this plan produces that for us. So, on the next page explaining the levels, you can see that there are five different levels. Those correlate with the COVID-19 alert system. For the purpose of this plan, you'll see the word face mask or mask used. We purchased NetGaters for all students so that there would be some kind of face covering and provide some more comfort if, if they so choose. Okay? So, I wanted to make sure that I made that distinction before we started and went any further. Communication, as we go through this year, communication is going to be critical, and we understand that as an administrative team. And so, at the bottom of that explaining the level page, you can see that we've noticed that we have created a COVID-19 tab on our website that will be updated weekly according to what color and level we are. We will also send out emails and texts. We use our Goalbug app for notification and our various social media sites, specifically the district Facebook page. I've also provided at the bottom of that a couple of links that will be active when we send this out to our community. The letters that are provided in there were provided from our state health department. And that is just to give folks an idea of how communication will occur if there are positive cases or site closures. If you look at the next page and you look at the different colors, we'll start with green, and that is fewer than 1.43 to 100,000 cases. In this level, face coverings are strongly recommended. There is some distinction for our early childhood teachers as they begin to teach sounds and letters to have a face shield, and those will be provided. You will notice that in our special education classrooms, there are some other measures that are taken, but the goal is to provide a free and appropriate public education for all of our students. And that makes that distinction in that special education classroom. Visitors, when our visitors come on campus, there is a screening form that will be, that they will, that will draw their attention as they enter our doors, and it, and we will, I'll show you that in the coming pages. We will also make sure that those visitors, like any adult, are wearing a mask when social distancing isn't possible. We want to really discourage visitors into the school this year. Now, obviously, there's going to be cases through counseling services and through state and local officials when visitors will be required to attend and will be required to be on campus. But our goal is to schedule as many of those visitations we can by appointment. If you look at the next level on yellow, you can see that the case level will be between 1.43 and 14.39 for our yellow. That is the current level that we are in right now. At this point in time, when social distancing cannot occur, face coverings we require. We have made some distinctions in that plan when they won't be in hallways for our younger students, but we, but we're, excuse me, will be required in hallways and in our common areas and when we ride buses. Anytime we made the decision with face coverings, we always wanted to make sure that we explained that we are going to provide opportunities where there not to be face covers. We fully recognize that we're not used to this as adults, and certainly our students won't be used either. And so, our teachers and our principals have planned opportunities to remove the face mask and to social distance as best we can in certain areas of buildings. Again, the special education section of this document just adds some special protections to our teachers and our staff as they provide those services. Visitor restrictions would remain the same in our yellow category. If you were to look at orange one, the transmission level would be higher in this, as you can see, from 14.39 to 25. At this point in time, we're going to begin to communicate with our local health officials and state health officials, is it necessary to transition to distance learning? Anytime we have those conversations, safety is the, is the most important thing that we paramount into determining whether we keep sites open. We've noted that what will happen with our instruction if we do move to distance learning and through those options, we understand that that could occur at a time when a device or a family might not have something at home. And so, as soon as it's safe for staff to return to a building, we're going to check those devices out, and we'll send a notice out for parents to do that. If we're in school during this level, orange one, face coverings we require for all students and staff when we're not able to social distance. We are going to require that adults wear masks around each other in this level. And for that matter, we want our adults to be safe around one another as we begin to bring more people in the building. So, we're going to encourage them through all levels to have those face coverings on when they're interacting in a close distance with one another, but only will it be required in orange one. If you'll notice, the special education classrooms in orange one change just a little. With regard to an IEP and providing that free and appropriate education, special education suits may come onsite. That will be determined by the individual education plan that the team has set forth at the beginning of the school year. We are again going to restrict visitation to schools. If you turn the page and look at orange two, the transmission level goes up in this point, the number of cases, excuse me, to 25 to 50. And we would stay in orange two, and we would close our buildings until we can return to the yellow level. So, at this time, we would move to complete distance learning. Any students that were on campus for special education, we would require a face covering and for those that are working with those students. And obviously, again, visitors, service providers would be restricted. And then finally, if we reach red with more than 50 positive cases in our county, we would close our sites. We would stay closed until we move to that yellow level on the COVID-19 alert system or health officials felt like it was safe to, to return. And I think I probably need to add there that the alert system that is used is not going to be the sole decision maker as we move from these levels to levels. It will certainly be a huge indicator. But we also understand that our local medical professionals may have some guidance that helps us as we move that direction. And so, we will be sure to make note of that when we communicate that to our, to our parents and families and our teachers. Obviously, in red, the only people that will be in our building will be our staff members or students that require special education services. And if you're on, onsite, a face covering is required if we are in red. Public health protocols. In our handbooks that you will be reviewing and reviewing, on Monday, we have an attendance questionnaire. This has been vetted by our school attorney and is something that we need our parents' help with. We need, we need our parents to screen your child before they come to school. Sometimes it's, it's, it's easy to think that it's all temperature, and it's not. There are other symptoms with this. So, we need our parents to show discernment as the discernment that we will show when your student comes to school. So, please screen your children before you put them on a bus, before you send them into the school. We'll need you to do the temperature check, and we are, are trusting that you will do these things before you send them into our sites. Isolation procedures. When a student is sick and they have the symptoms to COVID-19, every site has a procedure to isolate that student. That student will not be left by themselves, but that student will be removed from other students. We will contact the parent so that the parent can come and pick them up and encourage them to be, to, to go to the county health department or a local medical provider to be diagnosed. The important thing to remember, as, and you can go ahead and turn the page to the next one, as we begin to look at positive cases or suspected positive cases, our local health officials will make those determinations. The school will not do that. And when a student or staff member returns to school, our local medical professionals, they're the ones that will make that determination. That is not our responsibility. And so, I know that there will be questions about when we can return to school and when we can come back to work, and those are all case by case basis made by medical professionals. Talk a little bit about in that positive case page, the contract tracing. That word is mentioned, and that is a, a word that I think maybe needs, or a phrase that needs some explaining. In the event that there is a positive case, the health department is going to ask us for what we've done to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And so, when we talk about preparing and reopening our sites, it was important that we had in place mitigation strategies so that we can say to our state and local health officials, this is what we've done. To do nothing would close our sites, but to do something gives our sites an opportunity to stay open and our kids an opportunity to be around one another and participate in school. When contract tracing, word of again, and you'll see this later in our plan, our teachers are going to have seating charts, and that will help them with that. But again, local and state and county health officials, they're going to be conducting that contract tracing. That is not the responsibility of the school. They will be doing that communicating. Again, if there are any, if there, if there is any communication that needs to be done, the district understands that we have to communicate with our parents, with our community. And at the bottom of that page, it talks a little bit about, again, using Facebook, e-notes, and our app. Communication will be critical, and we want to be as concise and as clear as we can be, but we also all have to understand that things evolve and change as we move through this situation. And none of us want uncertainty, but there will be times when things are uncertain. But just know when they're uncertain, it's because we're doing our due diligence to make sure people are safe. If you look at the next page on our food service, in the event of a, of a school closing, a notice will be sent out regarding the locations for a pickup of a grab and grill breakfast lunch. We understand how important it is that our students are fed, and we're going to continue to honor that like we did last spring. From a delivery perspective, we, we want to try to deliver again. We want to try to deliver meals to people, but that will be determined by staffing. And I wanted to make note about option three. Our students that have, and families that have enrolled in our complete virtual at-home instruction may still receive a meal. They just need to contact the grade level they would be in so that we can get that meal prepared for them, and they can come and pick that up. Environmental and mitigation strategies. So, student activities at this time are going to continue as, as planned. Decisions determining crowd size and participation will be on a case by case basis. We have worked on as an administrative team, a checklist that we are in the process of completing so that we can make decisions we would like to a week in advance because this is an ever-changing situation. Again, when we make those decisions, please understand that they may change at a moment's notice. Facility use, at this time, we will not allow our facilities to be used by any outside groups. Face covering exemptions and accommodations. We wanted to remind our families and our staff that they should be washed every day, that they should be worn properly, covering the mouth and nose, and then I discussed the NetGaters that we purchased for our students. In talking with our attorney last night, there are many different exemptions, and so we've added all the exemptions that he feels comfortable with and have purchased face shields to be able to meet exemption needs that we may come across. I'll give you a moment to read through those. I won't read through those. And those are on, on two pages. Okay, school cleaning protocols. School cleaning, school classrooms and all areas will be sanitized daily. What does that mean? We will use our electrostatic sprayers multiple times throughout the day. High-touch areas will be cleaned. And let me just say, our custodians have done a magnificent job this summer. And we are, are fully prepared with hand sanitizer, with soap, with, and with towels that we feel like that we can provide a safer environment for our staff and our students, but that's a direct result of our custodians and their preparation this summer. There is a link there that links to the CDC, and that is the guidelines that we will be reviewing on a weekly basis with our custodians as to what they should clean. And obviously, if that updates, we update that, we update that guidance with our staff. Classroom and some common areas. So, specific mitigation strategies for sites, our teachers are working with principals, and really our principals have completed those, and we'll be releasing those this next week. We encourage parents to contact the school if you have questions. We've also got an email account, schools@alvoschools.net. If you want to submit a question, we're going to put out an FAQ next week, maybe a short video to answer those questions. So, if you've got a question that you don't want to ask in person, send us an email, and we'll be able to answer that for you. So, if you look through our classroom mitigation strategies, these are just general guidelines that we wanted our teachers to, to shape our teachers and staff thought. Planning time to wash hands and sanitize hands. Space students out as much as possible, seating charts, not sharing supplies. And I want to take a moment to thank our De La Leon and Lexi Lauderdale and Todd Holder and all of our community, those that gave for school supplies. Just an amazing job and makes this mitigation strategy that much easier as we begin to start school. With our elementary students, we're able to cohort easier. And so, those students are going to have some of those activities like music and counseling and library in their classroom, but they're going to go to PE, and they're going to go to recess, and there's not going to be a mask requiring in those locations because we understand that those are important for our students. We want to encourage our students to bring a water bottle with their name on it. We're not going to close up drinking fountains. We're going to sanitize those more, but we want to encourage students to bring the water bottle if they can. On the next page, there are more with our cafeteria. We are looking at alternate eating locations. We have alternate eating locations, but there will still be groups that use our cafeterias. And so, we want to keep some normalcy there, but again, we want to stay in school. And for us to stay in school, there are some things that we have to do just a little bit differently for a while. We put in there recess for our elementary students. We're going to stagger some recesses, but we want our students to be able to play with one another. Our schools were designed for social interaction, and we, we recognize that. And so, there will be times when, when that social interaction can occur. At this point in time, we're not going to have student assemblies. You know, obviously, when some social distancing can occur, and at different levels, that's easier, there will be some assemblies, but those will be made on a case by case basis. And then we talked about visitors again. We're not going to have mentoring this year. We want to protect our mentors, and we want to protect our students. And so, at this point, we're not going to be allowing mentoring to occur in our sites. Transportation. We put involved in a towel sized at the top of our transportation page. We really need people to bring your kids to school if at all possible. Social distancing is difficult on a bus, and it's difficult with our students. And so, we really need parents, if you can, to bring your kids. If your student does ride a bus, a cloth face covering will be required to ride the bus. We're going to, when weather allows to be able to circulate the air, we'll have windows down. We're going to encourage our siblings to sit by one another. We purchased a machine to disinfect our buses daily, and it will be multiple times a day between our morning and afternoon rounds. And Mr. Ellis will also, with our bus drivers, have a seating chart. Academics and growth, we have three different plans that are all linkable for our parents to be able to read there. In a few minutes, Mr. Feely will be reviewing those with you, so I won't cover them at this time, and the board has already seen the online learning options. I feel like it's important on the next page for counseling services. We want people to recognize that counselors are available, and we know that many of these parts of the plan or school will be difficult. Reach out to us. Staffing and leave. We're going to, we're going to send these plans out in separate, in separate documents, one for staff and one for our parents. I don't think it's, it's relevant for our parents to, to be concerned necessarily about our leave policies, but I do want the board to be aware that in the event that a school is closed, we may have teachers and staff onsite for contracted hours. We also wanted to note to our employees, the essential staff that would be required if schools are closed to make sure that we provide the essential services to our students, and so we'd make note of those. We feel like that we're better prepared to provide a food service. Ms. Martini, Mrs. Tucker, all of our principals, during that time, last semester, when we struggled our way through that for a couple of weeks, we feel like we're better prepared and have a better communication system, and so Mrs. Durkey at the central office will be the point of contact, and Mr. Ellis will coordinate delivery if that's possible. And then we talk about the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, which provides 80 hours of paid leave for our employees. As we go through leave, that will be on a case by case basis, and we will, we will work with our staff as those situations arise. So, again, I want to thank the administrative team. We've gone through a lot of paper and a lot of time and feel really confident and good about what we've been able to produce. So, at this time, I would entertain any questions that you might have for myself or any of our, our team.
Have you had feedback from your teachers on your plan?
So, we sent us, we, we sent out a survey prior, and maybe I should talk a little bit about how we developed it, not only with our medical professionals, but then with, we used our statewide teacher survey from the Oklahoma Education Association. We surveyed our teachers, and then we met with these specific teachers to go over the input into specific strategies, but then also to answer some questions. I think the overwhelming majority of our teachers miss our kids, all of our teachers miss our kids, and all of our teachers want to be in school, but everyone wants to be safe. And so, I think that's the overriding theme when we developed this. Our teachers and support staff did a great job. It's how do you keep them safe? And so, we've had feedback from them, and, and feedback varies. I get daily emails and text messages and, and phone calls about opinions, and they vary, but I think the consistent theme is we want to be in school. Any others?
Interchange motion on each one of these separately?
Let's do them.
Do them together?
Yeah, that's fine. Do we have them?
No, they're separate. So, we're going to approve the return to learn plan.
Yes, let's do that, let's do each one separately, if you would.
I would like to make the motion for, to approve the return to learn plan, but I would also like to add that we allow you flexibility to change the plan as needed. As, as we all know, it changes daily, it changes hourly, and I don't feel that, that you need to call a special board meeting every time if you need to make a call a special board meeting every time if you need to make a change to the plan. I don't know how we word that in the motion, but I would make a motion to allow you flexibility to change the plan as you see needed.
I don't see that as a problem.
I think that would be helpful. Again, no change in this plan will not be communicated to you as a board first, and obviously, our administrative team will make that together. So any change to this plan will be communicated to you all first for feedback. Obviously, any change to this plan is going to be discussed with health officials and probably school partners in our community, because we need to have a partnership as we work our way through this together.
I have a motion for... I'll second that.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Good point two, discussion with council board action, vote to approve the Al Public Schools Distance Learning Plan.
So at this time, I would like to have Mr. Feely, if he would come up here and have a presentation and walk you through our distance learning plan. A year ago, when we first did this school, we had to develop a distance learning plan and submit it to the state. And so we are in the process and have finished that. Again, you can see through this, this was not a one-person job, although Mr. Feely has spent countless hours on this. You can tell that teachers, and parents, and people have all had input in developing this distance learning plan. And so I appreciate his work, I appreciate these teachers, our administrators, and our parents for their input. They developed a great plan, and Mr. Feely, I'll give you an opportunity to walk through that.
So initially, back in the spring, we met with teachers to begin with and created kind of a framework for how we were going to approach distance learning. Coming out of the spring, we went to reevaluate that plan and reevaluate where we maybe didn't meet the mark and where we could make some improvements. And so I personally interviewed the parents that you see on these committees with a series of questions, took some input from them about what the challenges were for parents on a daily basis. And so some of those recommendations made their way into this plan, and this plan has been refined and revamped considerably. So on page two, you'll see the local connectivity plan, which has been updated, the information as far as the internet service providers in our area, for parents to be able to make a kind of a one-stop-shop area in the plan for them to find out where they want to get internet service from. In the spring, our survey showed that about 11% of our homes did not have internet access at that time, and we didn't have a really great solution for those families at that moment, because geography played a huge role in that. Cell phone services in certain areas were good and not good in others. I would say parents were pretty creative about how they were approaching that. We do know that some of them reached out to some of the surrounding internet service providers, like Canoe O'Kla services the area to the north and east of town. And I've been in contact with a board member from Canoe O'Kla seeking some help in that area. I've been in contact with a board member from Pioneer Telephone to help us service the carmen and the carmen area a little bit better. So we've got some information there, and we'll continue to work with those providers and partners as we go through this. They've all, all those board members have been very, very good about representing us, even though we're not really part of their service area as a whole. So going on to page three, it's a little bit more information there. For those people that don't and can't get that internet access, there are some options. Our Wi-Fi within our school buildings extends quite a ways into our parking lots, which is a common solution for a lot of schools that we've seen. We have purchased some hotspots, and we are working on the criteria, because we don't have enough to go around for everybody. But we do feel like we're in a pretty good place to reach the majority of those families. We've also written a grant to the State Department to purchase another 100 hotspots to go with that. And if we can get that grant, then we'll be in pretty good shape. Device access, we're very blessed over the last decade with the oil field in our area has put us in a position where we have the devices. We have the devices to reach virtually every kid, coupled with the families that have devices in their own home. So from that perspective, we're in really good shape. We have purchased a few more, I believe 150, is that right, Trevor? 150 additional Chromebooks, and we're going to put some of those at Washington, where we're getting kids used to that framework, that device, and we feel like we're in good shape. The next page, you'll see LMS and CMS platforms. LMS stands for learning management systems, and CMS is a curriculum management system. Our learning management systems are Google Classroom and CSO. CSO is pre-K through third, Google Classroom fourth through 12th, and it's basically a way to curate all the information that a teacher is going to use for instruction. Curriculum management systems, that is where the entire system, entire instructional material is all housed within a program, and we use Edgenuity at the high school level from sixth through 12th, and we'll be using ExactPath from K through five. ExactPath does not reach the pre-K level, and there really is no solution out there for pre-K kids. ExactPath doesn't cost us anything. It's part of the state contract. As soon as the school closure was over, the state began to work with Edmentum to create this contract, and so ExactPath is not costing us anything. And we have begun to get things set up and to work with our students on that. Edgenuity is a program that we've been using. There's quite a bit of expertise in the district that understands that program and how to leverage that for student success. We've been using it for our all-ten program for several years, at least, I'd say, eight or nine years. Going on to the next page. It is unfair to ask teachers to reinvent school without giving them the training. And so from a professional development standpoint, we have addressed some topics that we feel like are going to help us improve. Our PLCs are going to be a big part of that. We have speakers coming in. We'll be done virtually, to be honest with you, during in-service. And so we're going to be working on training teachers to better leverage Google Classroom and CSO for student success. The next topic is maybe the centerpiece of the plan, and that is grading. Throughout distance learning, we noticed some inconsistencies in grading practices. And so it was really difficult for a parent and a student to recognize, well, what do I got to do in this class to get the grade I want, as opposed to this class? And so at the very beginning of June, we set up committees with each of the content areas, the core content areas. And we discussed how each teacher was figuring their grades, how they were doing it on percentages or on total points. And it was an eye-opening discussion for everybody involved, because we found that we kind of had a hodgepodge of systems out there. And so through that discussion, we came to a consensus about having two categories. There will be a summative assessment and a formative assessment. Formative assessments basically would encompass daily grades, journals, anything that would be considered daily work. And then summative assessments would be anything that would be considered a test, a quiz, benchmark test, yes?
They all have this. They want to refer to this.
In that grading system document, you'll see a list of different types of assignments that would fall under those categories. And so we built some consensus among teachers that we would be consistent in applying those things to those categories. Now, the categories were created to create a consistent percentage given. So for instance, if you were in Algebra II, that may have been an 80/20 percentage prior, and you might have gone to Lincoln and found that it was 20% test and 80% homework. So it was almost a flip-flop. And then at the middle school, there were several different ways that they were doing it. So we came to a consensus on what percentage those would be of a grade, and then what assignments would fall under those categories. So at Lincoln, there'll be a 50/50 split, 50% for daily work, 50% for assessments. At the middle school, there'll be 60% for assessments and 40% for your daily work, that would be your formative assessments. And then at the high school, it goes up a little bit more. 70% would be for your tests and 30% for daily work. So from one class to the next, regardless of content area, those percentages will be applied. And within our Wing Gage grade book, those percentages will also follow through. Okay? So for instance, in a math class, you may have a homework assignment that would be four points, and then the next teacher might make it 20 points. Regardless of how many points they assign to that, it will still be worth that percentage, that 30%. So we're taking a lot of the guesswork out of it, we're making it more consistent and unified throughout. Before we go any further, are there any questions about the grading policy?
Does this just apply when they're on distance learning?
That's a very good question. So if they chose option one, whether they're brick and mortar or whether they're distance learning because of closure, this stays consistent. If they choose option two or option three, the system, Edgenuity or ExactPath, does all the grading. However that's figured, that's what we'll use. Is that answering? Okay, any other questions? Okay, we can move on.
I just wanted to draw attention to what the red part, no fault grading is no longer a policy. So just for clarification, when we go back to school, we're going back to school.
That's right.
So the grades are earned on my daily attendance, my work I turn in, and my summative, and so... When the State Department came out in March and said we couldn't lower kids, that no longer is true, and everybody will have a clean base just like any other normal school year.
Absolutely, yes. No fault grading is no longer part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Okay. So the next page covers assessment plans. One of the issues that's discussing with teachers was they wanted a way to be able to assure that the integrity of the test remained intact. They were very fearful that kids might be cheating, because there was no way to validate that. So these are just some of the suggestions that we will make. We'll do our map test early on, and that will help us place kids in ExactPath, so that's an important part. We'll do remote testing, where students will be able to sign up for a time slot, and they will be in an open Google Meet, so the camera will be on them as they're taking their test. They'll not be able to use their phones unless given an express commission from the teacher. And then once they're done, they'll inform the teacher that they've completed the test, and they'll snap a PDF using their phone and send it to the teacher via Google Classroom. So these are just some things that we're putting in place to make sure that teachers can still give assessments and then assure the integrity of the assessment. Okay, office hours. We had office hours in the spring, and it was a good recommendation, we just didn't know how to manage it quite yet. So what will be expected of teachers is that they will have office hours, that they will work with their principals to create this schedule, and they'll be in an open meet, an open Google Meet for two hours a day, and students can log into that Google Meet, ask their questions that they have, complete their homework, whatever, and then they can leave the Google Meet as soon as their question's been answered. But the teacher is available. And I would tell you that I had a discussion with a business owner in town, and he was really frustrated, because he was trying to keep his business alive, and he had employees that were needing to go home and help their kids. And his comment was, where are the teachers? And I said, well, they've got office hours. He said, well, when is that? I said, well, differs for each teacher. And so we want to be very cognizant of this, because this is a huge key, because a lot of those parents were coming home at 5:00, making dinner, and then getting to help homework, help with the kids' homework at 7:00 or 8:00, and they were spent. And so this office hours thing is a direct response to that. We've got to help our parents and our students during these office hour times. Virtual days. We have, one day a week will be built in for a virtual day. And what that means is that we're still in the school, we're still in the brick and mortar school, but the delivery of instruction will be done through Google Classroom. So imagine a classroom where the students turn their desk around the other way, so the teacher can see their computer screens, and we're going to teach, we're going to deliver the instruction through Google Classroom, the student will submit their assignment through the Google Classroom or CSO. And so we're going to be training our students the proper way to go through this distance learning before we have to do it. So we're going to be practicing. Okay, any questions about that? Okay. Attendance. This is another key component. Attendance in the spring, the State Department told us quit taking attendance as of March 6th, and what a lot of people don't understand is that state funding is figured off of average daily membership. And so they basically funded all their schools through the rest of the school year without taking attendance. That will be the case if we go to distance learning in the future. So the way we'll be taking attendance, by recommendations from the State Department of Ed, each Google Classroom and CSO account, or CSO teacher classroom, will have what we call an online master document. They'll turn out their assignments to their students on Monday morning through this document, and it'll say, Monday, this is your assignment, Tuesday, this is your assignment, so on and so forth. At the end of the week, the teacher will go back, and if they have completed Monday, they are considered present Monday. If they complete Tuesday, they're considered present for Tuesday. So attendance is not about having a student in a chair, it's about completion of work, which is the same way that option two and option three will be done as well. So we just received some recommendations from the State Department today or yesterday that give us specific codes to use inside of our student information system to do so. So it's really important that teachers and students recognize how important that is when it comes to funding for our schools as well. Questions on attendance?
I understand we correctly, Mr. Feely, it's, they have to complete the work on the day that it is being offered. It's not like I can do all of them on Friday and get attendance for all week.
That is not correct. So we could take attendance on a weekly basis. So what we found during distance learning was that kids were coming in, and they might want to do all their math homework on Monday, and do all their English on Tuesday, and so on and so forth. So what the teacher would do is, at the end of the week, they would review the work. And so if they did Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, didn't do Thursday, but did Friday, they're considered present all those days except for Thursday. And so they can complete it at any point, but it has to be turned in. We've given teachers a window from midnight on Friday to Sunday at noon. They can make their due date any time in that window. So then they'll come back and review it. Any other questions? Just communication with teachers, reemphasizing how important that is, and reemphasizing teacher office hours. Our maximum student... Our maximum student time commitments have not changed. There has been no change to that recommendation. So that's consistent with what it was in the spring. And then, once again, on the next page, family considerations. We want teachers to be proactive and reach out to students and parents. If a student is struggling, don't wait for the parent to make the contact. Contact the parent. Find a solution. There's a solution to every problem if we are diligent enough and work together to find that solution. And then reemphasizing designated teacher office hours again. And then just some feedback can be had at IT if we have a technical problem. And continuous at al schools.net. The principals all have access to that and will check that frequently to see if there are questions or suggestions or just, you know, any way that we can improve the system. And then you'll see the results from the March 2020 survey that we gave. Are there any other questions about the distance learning plan? Or the grading, for that matter? This grading system was really kind of tough for teachers to, because they all, you know, know what they know and do what they do, and they've maybe been doing it for a while. And some of them are having to change dramatically to meet the standard in that. Some of them, it's a short block. But there was consensus on all those suggestions, and we feel like we've got a good plan living forward on that.
I really, really like it, too. Thank you for all the hard work on it. I do have one quick question after I've had a chance to look at a little more on the grading system itself. On the front page, the percentages, you've given 50/50, let's say, the first one for all of that. Then you come in here, you do divide it between formative and summative. But then you also have a little place for bonus points.
Yes.
Are they limited in the percentages as to how many bonus points they can get? Or do they just decide which area they'll put them in the 50/50?
So their bonus points are to be added to daily assignments only. And the reason for that is if they give, you know, 10 bonus points and then you add it to a test based on the percentage of the test it's worth could really skew the grade. And so the bonus points will be applied to daily assignments or formative assessments.
But it'll probably be that 50%.
Correct.
So, okay. I guess it does not say that right there.
Any other questions?
I had a question on the online, on this page today. And it always says in here, so forgive me if it does. If I sign up for option one and I want to switch, or if I sign up for option three and I want to switch, do we have, just review me the policy as to what I can do if I choose one and want to do another one?
Okay. So during the online enrollment process, there is a form that parents can fill out and make that choice. Once they make that choice, then they go through the interview process, which is an application, and they meet with the principals. If it's elementary, they meet with all three elementary principals. If it's high school, they have a committee, and the middle school has a committee. And the purpose of the interview process is to fully vet the parent on how this option will take place, just so they have all the information to make a good decision. They're going to make the final decision all right then. If they choose option one, they can go to option two or option three at any point during the semester. If, once they go to option two or three, though, they're locked into that option for the rest of the semester, basically because of reporting issues that we have, we have to report it a certain way to the state. So there is some movement from one up the scale, but there is not movement back down to one until the semester. They'll be able to make that at the semester.
That's great. What is the deadline for enrollment?
So initially, we had put out July 16th, and we recognized a lot of families were waiting for this plan to be able to make a final decision. So July 31st is the final deadline to make the decision on which option to take.
So that's two days from now. How many, what percentage of our kiddos have participated in making a decision to get an enrollment at this point?
We have 83% of students have started the process, 59% have completed. And, you know, I would tell you that that deadline is not necessarily a hard and fast deadline.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Simply to kind of get the buckle.
Sure, sure. So when that deadline comes and goes, the folks we've not heard from, are we reaching out to them? How's that being handled?
So the plan is, since this plan is now approved, that we will begin to reach out. We have phone calls to those families that have not, which amounts to about 170 kids across the district.
And we also recognize there'll be families that will be moving.
Sure.
And so we just, you know, just like anything, we want to be able to make sure that we're planning and have what's necessary to meet the needs of our teachers and our kids. So you set a deadline knowing that, again, a time of uncertainty, we recognize that with our families.
And the deadline really, to be specific, was about staffing.
Sure.
How do we, we want to get some idea where we were at staffing wise.
Certainly, certainly. And it's also to the teacher for the responsibility.
Sure.
Because if you have, 50% of our students decide to do option two or three, that changes the scheme of what our order building's going to look like. We don't need four math teachers now.
Absolutely.
We need two doing mortar, and we need to move the other two to be strictly online. So I just want to say, and I'll follow this up with the motion, Madam President, we're going to all be better for this.
Absolutely.
I've been in education for 40 years, and this is tough. But we've got great kids, we have phenomenal educators, and we're all going to be better if we allow ourselves to become better. And I will say that that's the key. Communication's going to be the key. You know, I've always said, there's no such thing as a silly question. Well, now there really isn't. Because things are happening daily. I can look on any school website, the state of Oklahoma, and this whole thing is inflected. I mean, it changes. And schools that made concrete decisions a week ago and boards are changing because of numbers, because of things that are happening. So I want to commend the leadership team, all of you that are here. This is hard. It does reflect, I will say, Mr. Argo, thank you for including the other educational entities in our community, because this is a community thing. This is going to affect all of us, just like you said, for businesses who have to go home and reteach my kid math. They didn't sign on to be a math teacher. I did, but they didn't. And we just have to just go in with a positive attitude and do what we best can do, just take care of our kids. So thank you for your hard work and your diligence. And with that, Madam President, I made the motion that we accept 3.2, the approval of the distance learning plan. Do you want to do attendance with that? Since it was kind of sort of included, or do you want to make that separate?
Let's do it separate.
All right. Then I would make the motion that we accept 3.2.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes. 3.3, a discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Alvin Public Schools' virtual attendance policy.
And so Mr. Feely talked about that just a minute ago. With regard to state aid, it is critical that we have a policy that allows us to take virtual attendance, and the state requires that from all districts now. And so, again, this was not something that was just thrown together. And the time that we spent from an administrative team to Mr. Feely leading us through that process, they've just done good work. And I feel really confident about the attendance policy that he's going to present to you. I think it's fair, and I think it's equitable, and I think it will be a good thing for our district. So Mr. Feely, if you will walk us through the attendance policy.
Okay. So the distance learning plan, you know, makes reference to attendance, but this is a little bit more in-depth. As there's also epic charter schools, you know, infiltrating the state, so to speak, we have some new regulations that were coming out based on that, which have helped to govern this decision. And so I would point you to the very first page, bottom, where it says logging attendance hours. So within Edge Annuity and Exact Path, it will show us how long kids have been logged in. But that's not enough. We've got to see completion of exercises. And so the teachers that will be managing those two programs will create a learning plan each week for those kids. And that won't be easy because they're all going to be in different places in their educational path. So they'll create this learning plan, and then based on the completion of exercises throughout that plan, that will determine whether they were present. And then we have certain codes that we have to input into our student information system that will then go to the State Department of Ed and will help us to figure our daily membership and funding. So I would point you to excused absences on the second page now. There will be excused absences for personal, family illness, medical appointments, legal matters, extenuating circumstances, and observation apologies for religious affiliation. The parent just has to communicate with the teacher on those or the secretaries. Unexcused absences, if a teacher's not been notified or an excuse is not submitted, perhaps a doctor's note, then the student doesn't, does not complete the work on a regularly scheduled school day, the attendance record will reflect an unexcused absence. I would tell you that we are extremely flexible with that because at the end of the day, our school's not here for compliance to, you know, it's here for us to teach kids the stuff they need to know. So we're going to make sure kids are getting things completed. Okay. So this was really hard for me to wrap my mind around, and it has been for quite a while, but I feel a lot better about it now. You know, we've always tied attendance to sitting in a chair. In the virtual world, that's not necessarily the case. Because if we're in distance learning or we're doing full virtual option three, say mom and dad decide that they're going on a trip and they need us to go with them, sitting in the chair isn't as important because they're going to be completing that work online. So as long as the parent is making contact with the teacher to let them know that we're going to be out of the country, we may have intermittent internet service, but we're going to take our computer with us and we're going to keep working on this during this trip, then they'll be allowed to do that. Student contact with teachers. We want the students to have contact with teachers at least once a week. And we have expectations for our option three teachers to do that very thing. They will make phone calls and Google meets to contact and maintain and monitor progress. Very key in a full virtual setting. Mandatory state testing. If a student is taking option three or option two or option one, they are still going to have to come into the building at some point to take state testing. That is still a mandate from the state. Truancy would be defined as not meeting the daily expectations for at least 15 consecutive days. That would be at the very bottom, bottom sentence. So if a kid goes option three and they do not turn a tap for 15 days, that would be considered truant and be subject to all regulations thereof. Okay? So that basically covers the attendance policy, the very last page, or just kind of some examples of a learning plan and what that might look like, that a student would have to complete to be considered in good attendance. And this, a lot of this information came from Dr. Escol at the State Department of Ed and Dr. Glover at COSA. We've worked very closely with them in the past on trying to build this blended academy that we were working on last year, and that was very difficult work, and Ms. Kane can attest to. But I'm glad that we went through that because it put us in a position to meet this need. Any questions about attendance?
I might add that this is all difficult terminology. And so we've recognized that parents are going to read these and think, I don't understand. Please call us. That's what we're here for. You know, the, some of this educational terminology are requirements that we use when we submit these to the state. But we recognize that we're in this every day. And so we have a better understanding of what that terminology means and how it's applied. And so to call us and say, I don't understand, that's okay. Because we're going to help you find the answer, and we're going to help, we're going to help you pick the best pathway for your, for your family and give you the information that you need to make that decision. And so through any of this, and probably especially when you start talking about virtual attendance and what that, call us. That's what we're here for. Email us. That's what we're here for. We're going to make contact with you, and we're going to help answer your questions.
Motion for 3.3?
I make the motion we approve 3.3 into virtual.
Second? McDermott?
Aye.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
None of your documents are proven by earlier actions?
There are none.
There are none?
Okay.
And I make the motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?